A call to order the meeting of April 29th, 2015. For roll call, Mr. Bjork is unable to be with us tonight. Everybody else is present. Kim? Thank you. Shall we save the -- we'll go to executive session. We'll start afterwards. We are going to adjourn to executive session if somebody would move to enter into executive session for the purpose of conducting strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, with a return to open session anticipated at approximately 7:00. Mrs. Burns?
So moved.
Thank you. Second? Mrs. Brusad? Thank you. No. Mrs. Burns?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonish?
Yes.
Mrs. Brusad?
Yes.
Mrs. Carroll? Did you -- you said no, sorry. Mr. Mullis?
Yes.
And Mrs. Kane? Yes. Thank you. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay. Our first item will be approval of items by consensus. Let me see. We have the approval of the minutes of April 8th, 2015, regular session, and warrants G411, G412, R214, R215, R216, L28, L29, L30, L31, 32, 33, 34, 35, and 36. Mrs. Burns?
I so moved.
Thank you. Second? Mrs. Bonish? All those in favor? Okay, six unanimous. Kim, thank you. Next items would be the payroll warrant of 48, 2015, and 422, 2015. Mr. Mullis?
Motion to approve payroll warrant, 48, 2015, 422, 2015.
Thank you. Second? Mrs. Bonish? All those in favor? Four in favor, two abstain, Mrs. Carroll and Mrs. Kane. And the warrants FY15 revolving account. Mrs. Bonish?
Make a motion to approve the warrants FY15 revolving account.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Thank you, Mrs. Brusad. All those in favor? You can roll it on. Okay. You can.
I can.
Yeah. Okay. Unanimous. Thank you. Unanimous. Okay. Our next item is the student representatives' report, and we're not having that tonight. What did we forget? Oh, sorry. Oh, sorry. That's why I had them -- wanted to look at them separately. Okay. I'll let Superintendent Delisle do this. We have two very nice items to approve and some visitors, so.
Yes, thank you. The first is a donation from IBM Corporation that was made to the Shawshin School. It's a family -- a parent who works at IBM, whose children attend Shawshin and West. And she has been applying for this grant, I believe, for quite some time and alternates between the Shawshin School and the West School. So Shawshin is very excited, and I think they have some technology purchases in their future, so.
Thank you. And so I would move to accept the IBM -- I would have someone move to accept the IBM Corporation donation in the amount of $1,000. Mrs. Bonish?
I make a motion to approve the -- or accept the IBM Corporation donation of $1,000.
Thank you. Second? Mrs. Burns? All those in favor? Unanimous. Kim?
And very exciting, and we've got some visitors here to celebrate with us. And as you know, each year, the Wilmington Education Foundation gives out several different types of grants, but the Educator Exploration Grants, which I believe were renamed the Joanne Benton Educator Exploration Grants as of last year. And those grants were recently awarded, and I know that Robert is here, Robert Hayes is here, on behalf of WEF. And also with us, though, are the three recipients from this year's grants. And we have, sitting in this order, we have Donna Dubay from the Wilmington Middle School. She's a Spanish teacher, and she'll be attending a two-week intensive Spanish class at Don Quixote Language Academy in Spain this summer. Next to her is Bethany Dion, who is the school psychologist at the West School. She will be attending a one-week course at the Cape Cod Institute, Advanced Training in Collaborative and Proactive Solutions for Kids with Social, Emotional, and Behavioral Challenges, presented by Dr. Ross Green. Bethany is a member of our Behavioral Health Task Force, so we're really excited for her to go and come back and share all this great stuff with the task force, all the great things she learned. And then next to her is Mia Parvonen, who is a Wilmington High School English teacher. She is doing a self-directed fellowship to Finland for two weeks this summer to study three significant Finnish authors, including visiting museums, historical sites, et cetera, related to the authors. So there's some great trips ahead of them. So the total amount of the grant awarded is $4,400. That check is deposited into our grants' accounts, and we assist with facilitating the payment of the expenses on behalf of our explorers. So our thank you to WEF and to Robert for being here, and our congratulations to our three recipients.
Thank you very much. That's one of the best things. I'm not sure how many school systems have this kind of award for people, and I think it's so wonderful. It gets you so excited to be able to do this and you can't otherwise. So we really thank you. Yes, Mrs. Cal?
And to make sure that you guys come back, some pictures and movies, so we can see it, because we have a special night lined up for you guys, so love to see your journey. Thank you.
I got a quick question. Where's the Don Quixote School in Spain?
In Marbella. Well, they have them all through the board. And if any of you have a son or daughter who's interested in learning Spanish, it's a fabulous program that they have.
Marbella is very nice.
Yes.
I have family in Spain.
Where?
Madrid, Barcelona.
They have them there, too. You should look into it.
You should. And go to Alicante.
I've been there a few times, but.
Yeah. It's beautiful. It's wonderful. We really thank you all for coming tonight. That was well appreciated. Okay. Any other?
Well, I just want to say, I absolutely love Ross Green, and he's a fantastic facilitator and speaker, so I -- you're going to truly -- if he's running the show, you're going to truly enjoy that, and you'll get so much out of it. Good for you.
Robert?
Just wanted to briefly thank the --
Do you want to come down? You got the microphone? Feel free.
I'm used to this.
Listen, if we all have to have a -- we were just talking about how we have pictures taken around us in this particular facility, so.
There's definitely been an upgrade since I left the committee. This is a wonderful room, so this is great. I just really wanted to briefly thank the WEF SEP Committee who chose the recipients this year. It was Dr. Leslie Quick, Lori Ryan, Lori Fitzgerald, and Kate Burnham. And then just wanted to plug that WEF has raised over $25,000 so far this school year through the Spelling Bee, through the Walk for WEF, and through the teacher tributes. And it looks like we're going to be probably donating in the ballpark of around $40,000 to the school district this year, so.
Wow, that's wonderful, Robert. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Mrs. Brusad?
That's excellent. So I would entertain a motion to accept the Wilmington Education Foundation donation provided in the form of teacher grants in the amount of $4,400. Okay, thank you. Mrs. Brusad, second. Mr. Mullis? All those in favor? Unanimous. Kim?
You're welcome to stay, but you also don't have to feel like you have to stay.
Unless Neil will feel bad without an audience. Our next item of business would be the superintendent's report. Thank you very much.
Couple of things I wanted to share with the committee tonight. First of all, I did have the opportunity this morning to attend, and I thought I would sort of pass out some of the materials from this morning's MASC Day on the Hill. It was an interesting morning in that we did hear from several legislators, including Senator Sonia Chang Diaz and Representative Alice Peisch from the Joint Committee on Education, as well as Senator Spilka from the Senate Ways and Means Committee. They had some really interesting, good news to share with us about their agendas, upcoming agendas. I think one of my big takeaways was that there was a strong sense, particularly from all the folks, that both the House, which already has restored the funding for kindergarten grants, that the Senate was highly likely to follow suit, and they feel that for this year, FY16, that we're in good shape for those restoration of those funds. They did, of course, issue the caveat that moving forward, we should think about weaning ourselves off that funding, because that may not be continuing perpetuity, if you will. So that was an interesting discussion. I was scheduled to meet with reps and senators, or at least their aides or chief of staff, but then the fire alarm went off, and we had to evacuate the State House, upon which we all scattered. So I know that Mrs. Burns is setting up meetings with our legislative delegation in the upcoming weeks and months, so I think we'll still have the opportunity to have some of those conversations about what we see as legislative priorities that would help Wilmington public schools. Wanted to also let you know that a letter went out this afternoon to all middle school and high school parents in regards to the Youth Risk Behavior Survey. I think we've talked about this. We will be administering the Youth Risk Behavior Survey to all students, grades 7 to 11. This survey is basically designed to help us assess what types of risky behaviors, protective factors are in place for our students. A letter went out. Parents have the opportunity to opt out if they so choose, so the letter includes a form for them to check off if they do want to opt out. These surveys will be administered at the high school on the 13th and 14th of May, and at the middle school on the 15th of May. And they will be administered either sort of during a health class or a PE class, or during, in the case of the high school, the W3 block. So it's not going to impact instructional time, per se. And we expect that we will have results and presentation on the results to the school committee, probably sometime in the early fall as we get back from school, so be good information to have.
I'm just wondering, did it go out in -- I know it went out in an email. Did it also go out in letter form?
It didn't. It only went out in Connect 5. And what typically happens if someone needs paper copy, they'll contact the school directly for that. Yeah. Just wondering. The other thing was to let you know that we also today had the mock crash at Wilmington High School. The prom is Friday night. Juniors and seniors participated in the mock crash. This was the first one that I participated here in Wilmington, and I was completely and thoroughly impressed with the level of engagement with the students and the role that they played in this, and with the community participation. We had lots of different folks participate in terms of either observe or be part of it. So a huge thanks to the Wilmington Police Department, the Wilmington Fire Department, the Nichols Funeral Home, who actually brings a hearse as part of this, and they actually, you know, simulate a student who would actually be passing and what happens, as well as WCTV, who captured the entire thing on film. They'll be editing it, and they'll be putting it up as a video. So again, very impressed with the thoroughness of the presentation and the seriousness with which it was taken. So we hope all our students will make good decisions over the weeks, days, and weeks to come, and stay safe. And the last piece that I had for you is just a reminder that tomorrow evening, Thursday evening, 7:00 PM, in our new auditorium, the first official performance in our new auditorium will be the Wilmington Pops Concert. So if you're able to take that in, 7:00, featuring the jazz ensemble, the clarinet ensemble, and the junior jazz band from the middle school.
Not to say it, but someone I know is going to be there.
And that's it from my end.
It's so nice to have children in different activities, because you get to really see what's going on around the school system, and it's so impressive. Thank you. All right. All business? We have none at this point. New business? The draft of the DESE Educator Impact Proposal Options.
Oh, is that Mr. Ellis? Did you need to?
Where you go?
Oh, did -- that's the.
Yours?
So I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Burnham, who is our all-things educator evaluation here in Wilmington Public Schools. And we had the opportunity to attend together the midwinter meeting on March 17th. I know it hardly seems midwinter, but it was postponed due to weather. And at that time, we were both fortunate to see a presentation on the new proposed pathways for determining educator impact, student impact ratings, if you will. And I think actually Dr. Burnham had the opportunity to hear even further from one of her sessions that she attended, directly from Ron Noble of DESE. So she's just going to share with you, so you are up to speed on what has been proposed by DESE with respect to what we formerly knew as DDMs.
What you have in your packets is a copy of the PowerPoint that was shared with us at that midwinter meeting. What I have to share with you this evening is a much abbreviated version of what this all means. So basically, the Department of Ed has heard the response coming from the different districts regarding the challenges that they're encountering developing all of these district-determined measures. As you know, it's part of the requirement that every educator was to have a student impact rating determined based on two different district-determined measures annually for a minimum of two years to determine a trend. Our agreement here in Wilmington was that we would use three years to determine a trend to determine whether or not a teacher was -- had a low, moderate, or high impact on students and learning. Again, they've heard the challenges and given some consideration. They have gone back to the drawing board. So they wanted to stick with the five core principles from which the entire process actually originated, and they feel that the alternative pathways that they have suggested adhere to these five core principles. So first and foremost, evaluating an educator's impact on student learning must be at the center of the evaluation process. That districts must be able to provide educators with a rating based on their impact on students and report that rating to the Department of Ed. And judgments about educator impact must be based on multiple highly -- high-quality measures, including at least one common measure. That was the DDM, the district-determined measure. All district-determined measures are common assessments. Important to note here that where student growth percentiles are available from statewide assessments, they must be used. That's MCAS, Student Growth. As a form of checks and balances, the evaluation system must be able to juxtapose educator practice with impact on student learning. And we'll see at the end what they mean by that is teacher performance against those four standards on the rubric versus their impact on student learning. And lastly, the evaluation system must respect the professional judgment of the evaluators and the educators. Okay, so pathway one is essentially status quo. We're going to keep the model of district-determined measures as is, two measures per educator for a series of years to determine a trend, and therefore, we can use that information to determine the student impact rating for each teacher. The one thing that they're going to make a shift here is allow more time. Maybe districts want to keep working on this path, but they need more time to refine the assessments. And that has been heard, and basically, again, this is a status quo minus -- they're giving us an extension. That would be the option. Okay. Pathway two has to do with student learning goals. The suggestion here is that we can determine a teacher's student impact rating by requiring, if this was the district choice, by requiring teachers to have a second student learning goal. Right now, all educators, as part of their educator plan, are required to have one student learning goal and one professional practice goal. This pathway would require a second student learning goal, but that student learning goal would have to be based on a common measure. So one of the DDMs that we've developed, or where MCAS data exists, we would have to use the MCAS data. Pathway three. Originally, they sort of described, and you might see it in the packet that you have tonight in front of you, the original concept, they envisioned adding a fifth standard to the four standard rubric, the standards being teaching all students, curriculum and instruction and planning, community engagement, and professional practice, professional culture. So what they're thinking was, a month or more ago, was a fifth standard relative to data and assessment could be added whereby teachers would collect artifacts on student growth from the common assessments that are being used. Again, multiple measures has always been a part of the evaluation process. However, it would be required under this particular pathway that one of those measures would have to be the common measure or the ADDM. And again, where MCAS exists, that would be the one. So this is an attempt on the part of the Department of Ed to be responsive to the needs of the districts. They've heard feedback that has been highly valuable, and they feel that the feedback that districts are providing is consistent with the original five core principles to guide the evaluation process. And they've decided that the language of the legislation allows for this type of flexibility, because we're still going to use district-determined measures or state assessments for student growth measures. As you can see, again, the teachers get the two ratings for their evaluation. One is a performance rating. They're either rated exemplary proficient, needs improvement, or unsatisfactory. And again, that ties back to that performance rubric with those four standards. And then the impact rating is really a measure of student growth, an assessment. And it really doesn't change how the two ratings inform the development of the next educator plan at the end of the cycle. So next steps for us, we would have to reconvene the educator evaluation negotiating team and discuss the pathway options, make a decision prior to June 30th, because districts will be required to submit a request to adopt one of these pathways by June 30th. If we don't, we have to stay within the parameters that currently exist. Questions?
Not to be the part before the horse kind of gal, but that's me. I have a quick question. What -- this is two, okay, because I -- I know it has yet to be discussed amongst the team as to which would be the best pathway for our students, but regardless as to which pathway we may choose, my concern is in the collection of this is the transition, if the state assessment, which would be a common assessment tool, especially for student achievement, if that changes in the transition, the length of time that transition may occur, may occur over a couple testing cycles? How would that impact, how would that potentially impact the new pathway that we may choose to go with and the viability of being able to collect that accurate data and to show it?
So just to be clear, are you talking about should we transition from MCAS to Park or some other assessment?
Well, the first -- well, I guess, well, I don't think we can get away from it, because the state assessment is what we're bound to mandated by. So in the case that we do go through a transition with that assessment changes, because it's not apples to apples where we could -- the results would be skewed regardless because of the new format and/or testing measure. Would that transition piece affect regardless as to what we, if we don't do anything, or regardless of one of the pathways? I mean, how would that affect us statewide? Do we still -- I know right now that's a question as to whether we have to report certain results to the state. That's before the legislation, and that's in discussion right now. But my concern is, will that trip us up with not knowing what that future holds for us with regards to the pathways we pick and getting a good baseline?
Nope. Based on everything right now, what we know right now, a state assessment that yields student growth information will have to be used regardless of the pathway, including the current one that requires two district-determined measures per teacher. If there's student growth data available from MCAS, we have to use it.
Right.
So that's going to, whatever pathway we choose, it's.
I guess the accuracy during the transition for those pathways.
Yeah. What was interesting was when they were talking about Park versus MCAS and giving options for districts to choose, a lot of questions came up about how are you going to translate, some districts taking Park, some districts taking MCAS. How are you going to translate Park results to the SGP's for MCAS? And they actually came up with some word that I can't even remember, equi something.
Equi linkage, something.
Equi something. They, in a very complex way, that they were convinced, research-based, that they could make the translation from, to SGP, MCAS SGP from Park growth measures. So they felt that they were able to do that, so that they would come up with, whether you were Park District or an MCAS District, the SGP's, the measure would be comparable.
Right. But you have nothing to compare it to, so that's where my, that transition piece?
Well, it's a growth measure, right? So they would take Park results and use this equi something linking to link backwards to MCAS and still be able to create an SGP between MCAS and Park, even though they're different exams and they actually have different scales. They had a way that they were able to do that.
And I'd like to add to that, that the language that they continue to communicate is that professional judgment comes into play at the district level.
Mm-hmm.
So we can use our professional judgment.
Gotcha.
As we make these determinations in setting parameters for low, moderate, and high impact.
Very good. Thank you very.
So we do have a little bit of.
Thank you. Not to be the -- too far ahead of something.
Good question.
And they don't have any questions?
Thank you very much.
Yeah, you're welcome.
So you'll be back. This makes my head spin when I see all of this. You've just gotten yourself together, working with what they've told you the first time, and then they change it, and then they change it again. This is absurd.
The good news, well, I hope this is the good news. The way we framed the work when we started the work, I asked all of our staff to set aside this challenge as a compliance issue and to think about developing assessments that matter to them as educators. What did they want to know about their students and how they're growing? And that's how we approached it. So I can tell you that there have been many, there have been many assessments, common assessments, developed, which just in general is a huge step forward for the district to have common assessments for courses at the high school, grade levels, et cetera, et cetera. So that was good work anyway. It's good practice. It gives us resources to have rich dialogue as professionals around the practice day-to-day in the classroom and how to improve the practice based on what we see the results are from the students with these assessments. the students with these assessments. So, the work was not wasted. We have a lot of really great quality work and we're going to keep using these assessments and we will perhaps, dependent on which pathway we choose, rather than being required to track data on two of these common assessments per teacher, we could do it just with one. And we could look at these goals as, if we choose the goals or even for artifacts, we can approach it as a team goal because it's common to several teachers. So, the goal could be a goal that's common amongst all 10th grade US history teachers.
Sounds good.
Yeah. So, it, it's, it keeps the integrity and the intention of the original idea, but I think it gives us options that can lessen the burden of all of the data tracking and management and, and whatnot because that is a significant challenge.
And I think it was a challenge that really all districts were facing, a significant one. So, I think the other piece of the good news is that when MAS C and MAS S and MTA all join together and clamor for change around something that just seems like it's unworkable and untenable, that DES, DESE is responding and they say, okay, here are some options for you to look at. So, that's another piece of the good news. So, while, yes, confusing, I think it does give us some real good pathways to have some good conversations with educators around so that this is something that everybody feels this is valuable. It's not just about compliance, it's actually helping inform our instruction.
When it goes into DESE, however, it's not meant, I know, we're all doing it separately in the different communities, and is it meant for you to basically keep that within the community or is it going into them in some big packet?
All of the assessment data stays here in, in district. We have to report the rating to the Department of Ed.
That's all.
Right.
Just like we currently have to report the, the rating in terms of proficient, needs improvement for educators, we would just be an extra submission on our EPMs filing, their educator impact rating.
Okay. Very interesting. It'll be interesting to see if it does make a difference in the end. Let's, let's hope it does after all this work.
Well, I will say that the teachers did a lot of hard work and with good products coming out of all that hard work and they have much to be proud of and it was not for not.
Good. Yeah, that's great. Yes. Right, thank you so much, Dr. Brown. Okay, next, Mr. Ellis. Technology Task Force presentation, Mr. Ellis.
So, I'm gonna do this presentation from my phone to, as a kind of a jump, what you can kind of do from, with BYOD and phones in general. So, this is, I'm using a Chromecast key, which we're-
You don't get me on the phone.
Which we're, we're looking to roll out in, in the buildings in the future. So, it's all coming off my phone right here. Let me back up here, I gotta, I was going through my notes. There we go. If I move my phone like this, it goes like that. So, so, updates. I'm just gonna give you a quick update on what we've been up to since the last presentation we had, the presentation beginning of the year. Most of that's been taken up by the new high school, obviously. Should I be in front of this microphone?
That one or that one, whichever you prefer.
Over here. Hey. All right. It's like my days when I play guitar. So, the K schools, outside of the high school, we've got the K schools, Beltwell and Wildwood. We supplied them with tablet carts, so they're having a good time with those. They're, they're trying to integrate those into the classroom, use those. Tracy Jansen, our elementary integration specialist, she's supporting those and working with the teachers. North and West are getting Chromebook carts. Those Chromebooks just came in this week and we're reusing carts that we had for laptops in the past that were, the laptops are no good, so we saved some money there. We'll be rolling those out probably by the end of the year, probably get most used at the beginning of next year. We built a thin client server here at the high school. We intend to expand that. So, what that thin client server is, if you think of the old terminal services, and I told you a little bit about this, we did with the North and West at the beginning of the year, we built a much more robust one here at the high school, so we'll be able to build that out for the rest of the district in terms of replacing labs and offering a lot of software and power to the students in the, in the different schools. We have a storage server for backing up all the data that the teachers and students are making. We have a new voice-over IP phone server, which I spoke about probably this year and the year, in years past since we put on the fiber optic network. One of the plans was to do a voice-over IP project and that's to replace the phones in all the buildings which are ridiculously old. They're from like 1978. So, you know, there's no voicemail, there's no, I mean, it's, they're, they're old. So, this system that we built here will be able to build out over our regular digital network and supply to the, all the schools so that all the schools will have the same, be on the same phone network. We have at least eight more projectors being installed by the end of the year. That, actually, it should be a lot, we'll, we'll have, we've put three of those eight on already, so we should have the rest done. And that would pretty much finish out the schools. All the classrooms, everything should be done somewhere between now and the end of the summer. We got all the interactive whiteboards out of the old high school and we're now distributing those out to the elementary schools and the K schools. Actually, the K schools have interactive whiteboards in all of the rooms, so now it's just the one through three and four and five schools. We put on another security server here, so when that's finished, there were some issues with it, but when it's finished and consolidated with the one at the middle school, all the doors that have the swipes will be the same throughout the district. Everyone will be able to use the same card for every building. At the high school, we built, obviously, new switch infrastructure, new wireless network, incredibly robust wireless network. New printers. We put on six Chromebook carts. Our integration specialist here at the high school, newly appointed Julie Kelly, is helping the teachers on a daily basis use those and they're getting, they're signed out all the time already, which is great. We also have, we gave laptops to every teacher in the high school and we put about 180 docking stations, more docking stations than laptops, so the teachers can dock in other locations like the teacher planning rooms that we have on, on each floor, the second and third floor, there's two on each floor. And there was one student laptop cart that we rolled out. I'm not gonna go into all the stuff that's here because I could go on all night, but there's a lot of good stuff. Summer tasks. So, there'll be new laptops for the Shawshine and Woburn Street if we're approved at town meeting for the purchase of those. Those will be for the teachers. So, that would finish our, basically finish our teacher rollout for laptops for the district, so every teacher would have a mobile device. Actually, going back to that voice-over IP, it's a much bigger system than just voice-over It allows for online learning. We can, the teachers will actually be able to call in, you know, like FaceTime, Skype with other teachers or in groups for online PD. At night, we can utilize that and we can, you can screen share with that and that's, will be installed on everyone's laptops as just a default. And it's really easy, it's integrated with Outlook and everything else, so it's really easy to screen share and talk to other, other users on that. So, in, we went through a lot of pain to make sure that it, it worked externally, internally on Windows devices, Apple devices, Android devices, so it's, it's, it's a nice system. We're gonna increase the wireless functionality, so we're just gonna build on a little bit more to what we have with the wireless. We've kind of got the infrastructure in place, programmed it to work. We wanna make it work better for the kids in the teachers, so we're gonna program a bunch of new facets of that. There is a building video archive system that we're installing as part of this high school project, but it really will be, could be used by anybody in the district and it'll archive any videos teachers have on DVDs. They'll be able to pull them up at their desktops. Anything that's recorded internally in this room, we have a new, a newly hired media production teacher, Caleb Noble, so he'll be, he'll be directing classes in here with students, making videos and using editing, editing software to edit videos and they'll be able to put those on that server and we'll be able to offer those to the rest of the district. We'll also be able to stream in real time to computers through that system. We're programming infrastructure for the voice-over IP. It's not very fun to talk about. We're rebuilding the elementary report cards to build in the ELA portion. We've done the math already. We're gonna need to rebuild those report cards to expand the ELA to match it with the Common Core, so that'll be out next year. We're working on that over the summer. And we're gonna be building curriculum map functionality into Aspen so that teachers can align their lesson plans with the curriculum and Common Core standards. It'll all jive with everything that they're doing every day, so that'll help us along for, go a long way for connecting all the maps and what we do every day with what they do in the classroom every day. So, what is working? I asked everyone in the, the group kind of to, we made a, I didn't take a picture, well, I have a picture of it and put it in my presentation, of what, what we're doing well right now, what, what they're happy with. So, they're happy, the tech task force, stronger tech integration team, they're happy that there's a cohesive group with representation from each grade level. So, K through five with Tracy Jansen, Brendel Lomano at the middle school, and Julie Kelly now at the high school, they can all meet, they can kind of figure out what they're all doing, make that vertical, and it's also nice to have other people to bounce ideas off of. So, that's going along well. The Google Apps for Ed, everybody's really rolling with that in the availability of tools for teachers through Google Apps for Ed and Google Classroom. Julie Kelly, who's now the, who's here as our tech integration specialist, is a Google certified teacher. She flew to California and was trained. She's a super expert in Google and Google Apps for Ed, so we're excited about that. She could actually host Google, Google training days here at the school. Maybe in the future, we could have a full-on Google hosted event, which would be nice. The increase in computer science, so we've been trying to bring on more programming, increase in other facets of, of engineering. Tracy Jansen's been working with the elementary kids with Makey Makey, which is an MIT program of these fun, they're boards that connect to different things and you can make buttons with them and connect it to musical instruments or anything on the computer. It's, it's, you'd have to, you'd have to see it to, to really see. We're trying to build on a robotics program too in some enrichment programs in the summer using robotics, which would be really fun. Elementary tech vertical team is doing a lot of work and people are really happy with the work that they're doing. Staff flexibility and risk-taking seems to be a lot, a lot, I don't know, they're, they're taking a lot greater risks with technology, so the group remarked on that. The complexity of tech use has increased. The, a big thing right now is the QR scavenger hunts, they're doing a lot of these. Makey Makey, I just mentioned, doing videos, using apps in the labs, used for more than just web quests. They're trying to do the web quests at home and do more kind of complex things in the, in the computer labs. This was a surprise to me. People said they, they are happy with the new ticket system that we implemented about a year and a half ago and tech support in general, so I had to put that on there.
That's because they wanna make sure their tickets are bonded to it.
Yeah, I think that's probably, they'll get better service that way, of course. The wireless is solid, so I don't wanna interrupt that with, that with the things we do this summer, so hopefully we, we keep that going. And the new website and the new Wilmington app, people are really happy with. So, topics that, issues are, issues that we need to address. So, the top one that everyone was talking about was BYOD. So, especially at the middle school, they're basically doing BYOD now. They're, they're controlling it. It's kind of like one of those things that we just can't stop. So, which brings me to the electronic use policy, which is, there's electronic use policy for BYOD and then electronic use policy for social media. And we definitely wanna improve those and rewrite those so that we're, we're using BYOD and social media correctly. A long-term plan for transitioning to a digital learning environment. So, there's a, there's a, I don't know if I wanna say a push, but definitely there are a lot of benefits to personalization and differentiation using standard technology that we have and kids have at home. And part of that is, is transitioning a classroom from a teacher in the front of the classroom, you know, spitting out facts to having almost what colleges have somewhat now as an online class. And with that, the one-to-one back and forth with the teacher online and collaborative, and collaborative environment with the teacher, with their, with the teacher and other students online is a little bit more personal and interactive through a digital learning environment than in a normal classroom. So, you know, a lot of people are saying 20 years from now, how many kids will show up to school at all? Will they show up for half the day? Will they show up for a couple of days a week and do everything else online? As long as they're doing the work and they maybe come in for exams and assessments and they're keeping up, maybe we can personalize learning better that way. We'll see. But we should come up with a plan to transition to that so that we at least bring on some of those things and try them and pilot them. A, oh, I wanna select anything. Thank you, phone. Technology communication district-wide. So, there's a lot of facets to this. This could be us getting technology information down to students, communication down to teachers, to the principals, principals back to us, students back to us. We wanna increase that. We really wanna get a much better rapport going between the buildings. We, we do it all the time now, but I think there's room for, for growth there. Consistency with educators using Google Apps for Ed. There's, now that we're starting to really roll with Google Apps for Ed, other teachers wanna know, you know, teachers wanna know what other teachers are using Google Apps for Ed with and for maybe the integration into classroom learning across the board, doing the same things in different grade levels. Curriculum instruction, consistency with lessons and projects sort of feeds into the Google Apps for Ed, only, you know, devices, BYOD, Google Apps for Ed, everything, so. Oh, that's the end. I didn't put, I didn't put a blank page at the end. So, any questions? I actually added a couple of things on there from probably what is in your packet, the end there.
Silly question, but what do you mean by Chromebook carts? When you say you added six Chromebook carts?
Okay, so, you know Chromebooks are, okay. So, we purchased about 184, so there's one Chromebook cart we're still gonna roll out, but there are, you know, instead of laptop carts, they're just carts of Chromebooks.
And how many, are these for the students, do you?
For the students, yeah.
And how many Chromebooks fit in each cart?
They'll fit 31, but right now we have 26 in each cart at the high school here.
And how are they shared by the, are they just, they take them out when needed and put back and is there some sort of a, how do they go about getting them when, when needed?
Right, so Julie Kelly made a Google Calendar that all the teachers are hooked to and they can sign out the cart through the Google Calendar. And she's been working really closely with everyone, so in terms of use of the carts and, and using Google Apps for Ed- So in terms of use of the carts and, and using Google Apps for Ed with the carts and the Chromebook carts, she's been really involved in that. So they're on each floor. There's one in each teacher planning room and then there are two down in the library.
So how is that working with the BYOD program? Let's say someone brings their own device. Is that, they not need to do that or is this for students that don't have their own devices? Is that what it's meant for?
It's sort of an in-between. So I think there are a lot of teachers that will move to BYOD if they use a Chromebook cart and get used to Google Apps for Ed. And the next step might be, hey, I don't need to use the Chromebook cart anymore. I, I know all the features of Google Apps for Ed. I'll just have my kids bring in their phones or tablets or whatever it is and use Google Apps for Ed in, in my classroom instead and someone else can use the cart. Also, one of the, the pushes for Chromebook carts was obviously it was deemed the most fault-free park, park device, you know, for use of park. Everybody who used Chromebook, Chromebooks for park, it was smooth sailing. So that was one of the reasons for that too.
Just one quick question. You, you say increase in mobile devices. Again, is that part of this whole BYOD thing that more people bring in their own? When you say mobile device, like iPads and phones and? So you're seeing that more students are having access to their own device and?
It's, it's amazing. See, we can, we see all the devices that come on the network. Even if they come in and they just pick up on the initial guest network in the building. And the number of devices that kids actually add to the WPS student network. It's an amazing flood of devices this year. We didn't expect, I mean, we had, we had, I don't know how many DHCP addresses for, for devices, but it, it, it's now district-wide. It's, we just had to expand another 3,000. We had about 3,000 already. I mean, we don't have that many students and we already, we're already up like 5,000 devices in the district. It's insane. So every kid is bringing one in from, I don't know, fourth or fifth grade in, from what I can tell. So between a laptop they might bring in and an iPhone or iPad or Android tablet, Android phone, this runs the gamut really. But the kids have them and they're bringing them in. So the teachers are, are having the kids pull them out when they need to do anything in class, so.
It just as an example, I mean, I was at a middle school class a couple of weeks ago, just before vacation, a middle school ELA class. And they were doing some writing and they had a cart of netbooks that kids could use. But in addition, there were several students. One student had an iPad Mini, one student had a Surface, a couple of students had iPads. So all different devices that they're bringing and they're able to use, they were all able to connect. I would say actually some of the BYOD devices had a little bit easier time than the netbooks just because of the age of some of the netbooks. And they were using whatever device they had available to be able to do their research and their writing. And I mean, to, to Neil's point, we've always thought for a very long time that these were going to become the device, you can see from what he did tonight, not very difficult to, to make that transition.
So, and I feel like I'm asking so many questions, but this is really good information. So are we to a point where we're not really seeing a problem with students not having a device when needed because of the combination of bringing your own device and what we're supplying?
I think that's all, that's the, that's the goal. And I think we have enough devices so that if a teacher is using, correct me if I'm wrong, but if they want to do something with technology, we have the ability to provide the technology. Right now, kids have the ability to bring their own. I think you're gonna see more and more of that shifting such that maybe half the kids have their own devices and we're supplementing for half. Obviously, to Neil's point, in terms of park, you can't use your own device for park for obvious reasons. But having that available is great. But we, we don't have to fall into the situation where, you know, kids who don't have their own devices are left out if we have a BYOD lesson going on. And I think, you know, we've, I think this past year, right around the holidays, Neil pushed out specifications for, I think, Google Chromebooks because of their affordability and their ease of use. I think we'll see, as those prices come down, we'll see more and more of that. I think it's inevitable that we're gonna see the influx even more. I don't know how much, how many more of those, what'd you call them, DHCP?
Oh, yeah, sorry, I kind of thrown, thrown off some.
Four of them might be mine from my device.
So we, we ran out of IP addresses twice already because we thought, oh, how many more than 2,000 and, you know?
Have our many staff and students?
Yeah, well, every, you know, every staff, yeah. And they're, those are different, they're in different, they get different IPs too. Students get different IPs than the teachers do. So we're filling up one bucket and then we're filling up another bucket. And it's, yeah. The nice thing about the, the Chromebooks and Google Apps for Ed in general is that it's, it's universal. We, everybody, every kid in the district can get a, a Google Apps for Ed account. Through the, through the district, we control it. The, it's free storage, unlimited storage. So it's not like, you know, maybe in the future, you know, student A who has some money could store all their homework and everything else and student B who doesn't can't. We have unlimited storage all around and we can download, you can actually keep the stuff on the device and not be online. So if a kid's here and works on something, they can take it home and, and do it and then come back in and synchronize.
What's the difference between just regular Google Apps that you can use at home?
So Google Apps for Ed is a, is a whole program that Google offers where there's a lot of programming in the backend. But essentially, wpsk12.com, we offer a wpsk12.com account to a student that is a Google account. So they log on with, you know, you know, Jonathan dot Ellis at wpsk12.com. And then their, their, they're all their, it, it's synchronized with the district. So basically, we set up username and password here for the computers here. That username and password synchronizes with Google at night in our umbrella of wpsk12.com. So when they log on here on anything, when they log on at home at anything, it's the same password. Everything's hopefully seamless. Grades K through eight, although we haven't really rolled it out through K through five, mostly just middle school and high school. The, the middle school eight and down is, is set up such that only wpsk12.com accounts can communicate with other wpsk12.com accounts. So all teachers and students can communicate and collaborate. All the apps that are available, we can control the app. So if we don't want kids, you know, hanging out, doing Google Hangouts or, right now, we don't really have Google Plus up. But we can control those things. So kids at different grade levels, it's easier for the teachers to manage those, those applications and make it safe as well. So, I mean, students aren't supposed, one of the things that drove this was students are not supposed to have, just the, 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 um, policy that Google has is 13 and under, you can't have a Google account. And there were kids under 13 in grade six that we, the, the teachers wanted to have Google accounts because they wanted to use Google in their classrooms. So we wanted to make this available to everyone. Does that answer your question?
It does. I have a lot more questions, but we can take it offline more.
Sure, sure.
Appreciate it.
The Google, other thing about Google Apps too in general is that it's device agnostic. So you can use an iPad, you can use a Android, you can use Surface, you can use a Chromebook, you can use it. So you can use any device and still get to your Google account and your Google Apps.
Which makes it a lot easier for teachers across the board, the board, to use it on any BYOD device, whatever kids bring in.
Thank you, very informative.
Sure.
Does anyone have any other questions? Because I do. No, no, you go first, that's it.
I just had one really quick question, if you don't mind clarifying, with regards to what is working, which is fantastic. When you, you, the team discussed staff flexibility and risk-taking. I know that there was a lot of teachers who are a little not tech savvy and not really utilizing the technology in their classroom. When you say risk-taking, are you talking about those teachers who have some familiarity and are expanding upon it? Or are you talking about those teachers who are avoiding it because of the intimate, you know, whether it be vocabulary or the intimidation of it all? I'd be interested if, I mean, I'm sure it encompasses both, I'm hoping.
I, I'd say it was both, yeah. Because I, I heard, you know, anecdotal evidence of that at our meeting of what, I mean, they, I wish they were here, they could probably provide you with a better instance from their experience in their building. But I do know of, of a few teachers who really had never done anything before and really jumped on board with using Google Apps. And Julie Kelly's super friendly and she's super approachable. So, you know, people love to go to her classes and learn things. So they'll jump on board and they, they get into the technology with Google Apps and then it breaks out from there, so.
Okay, great, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Okay, I'm sitting here thinking, I'm just not sure which aspect I wanted. So I just want to ask you a couple of questions and then I want to say a couple of things. And we know I'm the curmudgeon of social media, et cetera, so keeping that in mind, I'm doing better. When we're talking about these Chromebook carts and they've, it sounds like they're replacing, are they replacing the laptop carts that we bought over the last three or four years? Because some we just got in the middle school last year. Are they being used, what we've?
The, yes, yes. So the, the, the middle school ones are actually, I want to, I think they're actually almost three years now. But we've updated them as we've gone. But yes, everything's being used. Three or four years, you know, five, five-plus years, we usually see stuff start to degrade and be unusable depending on, on, on what it is. But, you know, typically a laptop, if it's not a super durable type laptop, five years, within five years of student use or any use, they'll, they'll be damaged. So, yeah, we usually have to take them offline at that.
I think to your point, and just to acknowledge is that the Google, the Chromebook carts that you're getting right now are at the intermediate level and we have them at the high school. The middle school still has their laptop carts. And I think to your point, as those become obsolete and degrade, the likelihood that they'll be replaced with Chromebooks is probably good if we continue to see the success rate. But we're not going to prematurely replace those. We'll wait until they actually degrade.
Okay.
Thank you, that's what I meant to say.
You work well together. That's good. A couple of other things. The, in the summer, the teachers all have been given laptops. Are they able to take them home during the summer to do summer work? Or, I mean, are they really their laptops or do they have to be locked up? What did we do with that?
No, no, I would encourage them to take them home and use them as much as they, you know, they can, get used to them. Work on stuff over the summer if they want, sure.
Excellent, okay. The other thing is I saw you said on your report about elementary report cards. I have a vision, I've seen elementary podcasts this year, I have a vision of them on the, are they, are you talking about changing them so that they'd be on the internet? What do you mean by what you said on the elementary report card?
So, so we already, we do the entry for those grades online in the schools. All the teachers enter their grades through Aspen. We've had two or three iterations now of, of, this will probably be the third iteration of the report card. I guess the physical report card that you, the paper report card and how it's laid out in the number of items listed for each, you know, subject. So, so this report card would just expand the ELA to, to, it would expand it and match it more closely with the Common Core standards. So yes, the, the, the online report card, it's, basically, we're changing the paper chunk of that. But we could, and we have in the past, printed all those out as PDFs, attached it to the student, put it in a, on the student portal, on the family portal, so the parents can get it digitally, which we can do again. So the parents can just go to, log on to the online portal and get the report card there instead of waiting for the paper one.
So you, you don't mean to be changing the actual format of the report card? In other words, they'll still have math, whatever it says under the math, science, social studies, all of that. You're not, you're not talking about changing the contents of the report card?
We are changing the contents of the report card.
You are or you're not?
We are. But the, I mean, the contents are up to the report card committee and the curriculum.
Good, that's what I was getting at.
Yeah, we're just programming it.
Who was doing that work?
We have to do a lot of work on the, on the programming end, but.
It's, it's basically alignment. So the report card changed to a standard space report card in this district. My understanding, I wasn't here, for math. And it was known that eventually ELA would follow suit, Kate's team or report card committee working on that.
We're working with the K-5 ELA curriculum map documents. We just completed yesterday the draft of the grade four and five, writing rubrics for each writing type. So at this point, we have writing rubrics for each writing type for kindergarten through grade five. And the standards of the report card need to reflect the, the current Massachusetts State Framework standards. The language that had been on the report card previously really is no longer a good match for the current language of the standards. So that's what, what Neil was talking about. One of, one of the subgroups has been working on updating the language on the report card to be more reflective of, of the language and the standards. And they will have the new writing rubrics that are also aligned with the Common Core standards to use as an assessment tool to help them report on the report card. So there's a lot of work going on right now with K-5 ELA. We're trying to put all the pieces together so that we're, we're good to go in September.
Okay, because I guess I'm trying to see the school committees place in all of this too because it seems to me that in the past, we have, we, eventually we'll be able to see that report card.
It's in draft form.
We've had to report. And the other part of it is when we're talking about electronic use policy, social media policy, who's going to be working on those policies? Because we really are the policymakers. And do we need to have somebody from this group with you on that policy?
So the, the elect, the one that I, the immediate one we talked about, I think we've had conversations about the social media policy for a number of different reasons. Social media in terms of the use of social media by staff, social media in terms of what is our policy and what is our process for handling the posting of student pictures, et cetera. So we are collecting templates of, from various sources of examples of social media policy. And the intent obviously is to have that avail, information collected so that the subcommittee, the policy subcommittee, the school committee, has something to be able to chew on and look at and reflect on and then eventually vote on and then bring to the committee for a vote. So I think Neil's just recognizing that there are some revisions that need to make, be made. We, it's our role to gather that information, give it to this policy subcommittee so that they can then, you know, figure out what changes need to be made to those policies to be wrapped to the committee.
Thank you, Manny.
And I think, not to confuse, but electronic use policy or media policy, social media policy, are almost two separate things that work together. So when we're talking about electronic use policy, we need to talk about policy not just for the students, but for the teachers and the administrators and everyone that's using the internet or going online. All right, just like any other business or anyone else.
Acceptable use policy, that is what dictates for staff, what is appropriate use of technology while you're, you know, on the job, if you will, in classrooms.
Exactly.
Electronic device policy has typically been more reserved for students. What can they, what devices, when can they use them, how can they use them at the teachers', you know?
And, and I think separate from that, but in the same realm is, is a social media policy.
Exactly.
And I, I think that's what you're trying to get at, correct? So, all right, so it is important that we get involved with that.
And I just have one last thing. Do the technicians work all summer? I don't have a thing of that, oh, good, okay.
Oh, yeah, they definitely do.
Busiest times.
Yeah.
Other than this high school project.
Yeah, geez.
So if a teacher's always from home, all the tech support from home, if they have any issues, is that 24 hours a day? Just like?
No, it's a 24 hours a day.
We're gonna lose some of them.
It'd be easy for me to call you guys and call.
That's a good, that's a good, we do have the, the, our ticket system is available externally outside the district. But it's not, it hasn't been set up for teachers to put in tickets from home, but we could do that. Yeah, but then we could ignore them because they're not here.
I know it, Mrs. Carroll. How about Aspen? How's that going? Have we had any difficulties? Is everybody using it? Is all the teachers using it?
Yeah, it's, it's, it does some things well and, and other things not as well. So, you know, it, it does. So, uh, you know, it, it does what it does well, it, uh, keeping track of all the student records, um, everything we have to submit to the state. We, uh, use it for, uh, conduct, student conduct. So, all the buildings are, they're using more and more, uh, of the modules within Aspen, but, uh, yeah.
How about our teachers? Are they updating it and?
Yeah, so it, it's, it's, it's hit or miss with different teachers depending on, uh, what they're using on the, on the family portal. Is that, is that, is that what you mean? Like in terms of what the teacher, the parents see? Yeah, um, you know, we, we don't have, have a very strict policy. So, um, some teachers will update, uh, more often than others and, and make information available.
And should we have it, a strict policy for those teachers who don't have it or who that is not using it? Is that fair for the teachers that are using it or for those students or families?
Well, it's, I think it's, 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 um, it's something we would have to negotiate with the union in terms of what, how many times they would update it and, and what would be updated, so. Which it was originally.
Or at least like, you know, um, not maybe all the time, but a certain time, you know?
Yes, some buildings have.
To make sure the teachers get that in, get everything in.
We do have a, a, the buildings do have a policy of having them updated mid semester in, in place of an interim report, which we no longer send out.
And who overlooks that?
The principals, yeah.
Thank you, Mrs. Blanche.
I just had a question. I'm curious about the voice over IP phones. Are they, are they implemented anywhere yet or is that something?
Oh, they're implemented in this building.
Yeah.
Everywhere, yeah, there's one right there.
Oh, okay, so it's an actual phone? You're using real phones or headphones or?
Both, all, all the above. So, we have some, uh, we have implemented actually already some of the Jabra headsets for some of the, um, the, uh, the, some of the, um, admin staff. We have, uh, the actual phones in every classroom. So, you know, obviously for emergencies, you've got to pick up that phone, be able to call. We want to be able to call rooms. For teachers, they have, they have essentially been, uh, assigned an extension, uh, which kind of is used, but mostly you could bring up the Link software. It's called Link, the voice over IPs. You could bring up Link on your computer and, uh, or you just an Outlook and you can right click on the name and you can, there's a little thing that says call and it'll say, just say, call Link phone. And you'd call the other teacher's computer. So, one of the things that, one of the things that went into, uh, the, the process of thinking about this school and how teachers will work in this school as opposed to the other schools, this is more of a campus format where teachers are much more mobile. The building is based on, uh, scheduling and how much of the facility is used according to schedule, not how much of the facility is designated to a teacher. You know, you, you know, all of this stuff. So, because the teachers are going to be more mobile, um, we wanted to be able to call them wherever they are on a mobile device. So, you'd actually get a link, I have a Link app on my phone, my cellphone. So, it'll ring at my computer. If you're a teacher, it can, it could ring, um, at their, uh, at their, on their computer, on their cellphone, if they have the app. You can have it ring to one of those phones if that's, if you've set it up. So, you can kind of get to anybody wherever they are if you need them. Um, it's a much more, uh, in terms of emergency, uh, we also thought a lot about that and, you know, if you're in an emergency or in your classroom, there's an armed shooter, you're somewhere that doesn't have a phone, you're in the bathroom, you could use the school's phone system to call out using wireless. So, maybe you don't have a phone signal, right? You don't have a 4G, you don't have a 3G, but you are on the wifi in the building. Then you can get on the Link and you can make a phone call through the wireless wherever you are.
My cellphone becomes voice over IP in my house as soon as, because I have bad reception. So, because I use it for work, as soon as you, I have it set up, that it becomes voice over IP. It actually goes through my, uh, my internet.
And again, uh, from home, teachers, if they're dialed in on that online learning, we set up a new conference line so you could dial into the conference line and, uh, uh, use Link. Link would dial in so they wouldn't be using, um, they wouldn't be charged on their 4G or their phone at home. They'd use the phone, they'd go wirelessly through the internet to the phone here, so. Yep. Trying to keep it universal and fair.
And the next, um, the next time you come and visit, we'll have to have you sit down. I know you didn't want to stand.
No, no, I like standing up, it's fine.
Yes.
Had a guitar.
So, I just wanted to just officially, formally recognize and express appreciation to Neil and his staff for all of the work that they've done, most notably on this building, particularly on this building project. And, uh, I certainly was here for many evenings and weekends to watch them at work. It was, it was a huge undertaking and I don't know very many school districts whose IT departments would take on a project of the scope and, most importantly, carry it out so adeptly and so well. So, kudos and congratulations, uh, they've done a great job.
Thank you very much.
Very few companies have an IT department.
We think alike. I think I was, I was going to say the same thing to you. Um, I know sometimes my questions may come across as questionable, but, um, it's just to show me more and more how much we are offering the children of this community. And I don't know that other people are aware, so it's good to ask the questions and have the answers out so that they can know and learn that, um, we have a handle on it. All those little devices they're clicking away on, they're, um, they're so, they're of good use in the classroom. And, um, we're starting to really work on that area and you're doing a great job.
Oh, thank you.
It's good to see, I remember three years ago, we're talking about 21st century education, about all these different initiatives and it's, it's great to see them actually come into fruition, so.
It's incredible that they are.
Nice presentation, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Sorry, Paul, took too long.
When you only get to come once a year, you have to take your time. Get the time you can. Thank you so much. Okay, our next item would be recommendation for the last day of school.
Yes, as I mentioned at our last meeting, uh, looks like the weather has turned. And so, therefore, not anticipating any more, uh, school cancellation. So, at this point, the 180th School Day for grades K-8 will be June 18th and for grades 9, 12 will be June 19th. So, we're looking for a motion to approve those dates as the last day of school.
Okay, do we have, Mrs. Brusseau, second, Mrs. Carroll, all those in favor? Okay, unanimous. Thank you, now people can make their plans for the summer. And our next item is the, um, audit results for fiscal year 14 end of year financial report.
Yes, and these, this, every year, as you know, we submit to the state the end of year pupil and financial report. It is quite an undertaking. Mr. Rogiro does this for us each year and as part of the requirements from DESE, we not only have to submit the report, but we also have to have the report audited. It's not your standard financial audit. It's, audit is more that we have complied with the procedures as stipulated by DESE for filing of the end of year financial report. So, uh, we, um, thanks to Paul's efforts, we have a wonderful report here. There's just one finding and my understanding is it's a finding that we've seen, uh, in the past and.
That's my question.
Yeah. Yes, the finding is, um, in regards specifically to having a agreement with, um, municipal, uh, department in terms of how you allocate municipal expenditures. So, we not only have to report on what's spent out of the school committee appropriation and the grants and revolving funds, but any expenditure that's made by the town on behalf of the schools. One notable example being health insurance. So, health insurance doesn't fall under our budget, but our employees are covered by the town's health insurance. So, the town has to calculate what portion of their health insurance expense, for example, is a charge back or gets allocated to the school and that gets reported to the state. There are other expenses like public buildings, the public works, where they are expending on our behalf and they calculate how much of what they spend is attributable directly to the schools for us to report. Uh, the DESE is typically looking for there to be an actual written agreement between the municipality and the school department that lays out exactly how those expenses are calculated and allocated. So, um, certainly I, I, I'm aware of some templates that we can use and I think that's something that we can very easily remedy using these templates and having some conversations with the town accountant and folks at town hall, exactly what process they're using and just formalize those in a written document.
Yeah, they, they use the same allocation methodology all along. So, the issue is, is like the superintendent said, just having a physical signed document. I have sent some samples to the town accountant as, um, late as, you know, last week. So, he has a whole bunch of different, um, versions from different, um, districts and so forth. So, we'll get something in, you know, in place.
It's just a minor procedural thing, it's nothing.
Exactly.
Yeah, no, it's, yeah, and even in the audit, um, the auditor's said that the same methodology's been used year after year after year and there's a spreadsheet that shows how the costs are allocated, what methodology they use. So, we just need to have a signed document.
I would say if, given that that's the only finding, the amount of effort that goes into aligning our expenses with the DESE chart of accounts and accounting for every penny for every school, for every item, line item that we budget and to have that be the only finding, to me, is a clean audit. So, I mean, Mr. Rogiro is to be commended for his, and we know him to be very thorough and detailed and obviously it, it shows here.
Great, appreciate it each year.
Every year it's been the same too. It's been right up there over the top. Very good, thank you, Mr. Rogiro. Okay, um, public comment. Okay, moving on. All right, um.
I think there is a statement just in this one, just so you know, and, oh, I thought you were going to feature.
Oh, no, first we'll do the other reports. Does anyone have any other reports, Mrs. Brusseau?
I do, the Superintendent Evaluation Subcommittee, Matt, that's a mouthful to say, uh, April 10th, just to review the action that we've taken so far and what action we need to take going forward. I think we're pretty much all on the same page about where we need to go from here. In just a moment, I'm going to share some dates, so everybody get ready to jot a few things down. But, part of our discussion, Superintendent Delai just asked if at this point, do we have enough information and evidence and artifacts from her? Right now, she has shared with us, there is a hard copy of her collection of evidence at the Roman House. I know, MJ, you've had an opportunity to look at it, but it is there for those of us to go take a look. And we have also received an electronic copy through Dropbox. And I started to look at it and got a little overwhelmed. So, um, the question is raised, is there enough so far? And if, if there is something else that you might like to see? So, give it a little bit of thought if you haven't had a chance to do so already. And Superintendent Delai is more than happy to share with us basically whatever else we're asking for, okay? So, now, what we need to consider is we're going to give us a deadline of when we need to compile our individual summative end of cycle evaluations. And Superintendent Delai shared with all of us this binder. I don't know if everybody, hopefully, everybody still has it. And in it, there is a blank copy of the form that we as individuals need to complete. I was going to make copies tonight for everybody and then realized I had written on mine. So, we can get you a blank hard copy. We can also get it to you electronically if that is easy. So, this is what you got to write down. Our individual deadline to complete our individual evaluation is June 24th. So, kind of put that on your calendars. Superintendent Delai is going to share with us the beginning of June, her end of cycle report. So, we will have about three weeks to review that and to put that into our individual reports as necessary, okay? And then over the summer, Chairman Kane and I will compile all of our individual reports into one big report and that's what we will be sharing publicly. And we will have to, um, vote to approve or to accept that cumulative report. Right now, we have a tentative date of doing that publicly, September 9th. So, just kind of keep that in mind. Put it out there on your calendars. It would be great if we could all be here, if we can control that, that would be great.
Now, once we've done that summative report, how would you like us to? Do we get the, I presume we get the information to either of you or how would you like?
Yeah, I think, you know, there's only, there'd be seven of them total, so.
Yeah, I just didn't know if it, if there was a central place that you'd pick up or?
Why don't we do this, why don't we, we'll put a folder at the Roman House? Is that agreeable to?
Can we do it electronically as well?
Yeah, absolutely.
Do it to me, it's electronics.
Do it to me.
All right, I'll send it to you.
Send it to me.
And you can send it to me.
You'll be sure.
And I will, I will send these out, so everybody has an electronic copy.
Oh, that'd be great, that way I could maybe mark up the paper one.
Yeah, the electronic is a word document.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, that would be great for me.
Yeah, so I will get the electronic copies to everyone.
Thank you.
But, June 24th, that's your deadline. Okay, that should give us all plenty of time.
We'll get our reminders.
Absolutely. I can be very, uh, aggressive with my reminders. And, uh, that's all I had for other reports. I was going to give a plug to, for WEF, but that's already been taken care of, so.
Good, thank you. I attended the CPAC meeting for the special ed, um, last night and they are such a good group. They, they work so well together and they're very involved in educating parents in the school system, parents and teachers and helping teachers too. So, they're going to be coming June 9th to give a little summary report, 10th.
June 10th.
They're coming June 10th, um, to give a report that just kind of summarizes what they did for the year and, and where they plan to go for next year. So, that, that will be interesting, they're good. Okay, and then we need to look at the dates.
Yes, there's, I think there's an error, the, the date, it's May 6th, May 27th, June 10th and June 24th.
Right, okay. And, and just to, it can't be said enough because I know some of us are going to forget some of these, meaning me. Saturday, May 2nd, which is this Saturday, we have town meeting and, um, hopefully it starts with a quorum at 10:30. In any case, we go for the, definitely for the, um, school budget. Hopefully, we can all make it for that and, um.
Do we know when that will be?
Oh, it's at the very beginning.
Oh, good.
Oh, it's at the very beginning, it's the first, it's, it's the first section, yes. And then, um, we typically stay, some people stay the whole day. Other people stay parts of the day, like for the, for the morning because their children have activities and everything. And the people who are in our central office, after we're finished, we, they get to go home. But, there's also warrant articles and they're at the beginning also. So, there'll be, I think, do we have three or four warrant articles?
There's some technology, red capital warrant articles and then, um, yeah.
Those are the ones, it's good to have people there so that, um, the town realizes that we really can use the, the, that way of paying for these items. So, um, one's a van, I know we have a van on there right now.
And that technology that Neil referred to today.
I will be coming late, just so you know, I'll be coming up from Rhode Island, so.
Right, yeah.
I'll get there as quick as I can.
Okay, that's great. Sometimes it doesn't start till 11 because of not having a quorum. I'm thinking where it's at the new high school this year, um, there'll be a quorum early.
New moderator as well, maybe they'll.
Oh, true, that's right, yes, yes, so I think that should be okay.
Where is it going to be held?
Here, in the auditorium. So, that'll be interesting.
I'll feel get started early.
See how that starts. Then on Wednesday, May 6th, next week, we're having our regular meeting. And on Tuesday, May 12th, we have the High School National Honor Society at 7:00. These activities for the seniors, we typically attend. We have Wednesday, May 20th, the Underclassmen Awards at the high school at 6:30. And Wednesday, May 27th, we'll have the regular school committee meeting. And then the weekend of June 5th, 5th is the, um, awards, the senior awards night. Scholarship night. And then the graduation is the 7th. So, and, um, if you just let Amanda know if you can, if you're not able to make it or you can't make it, so she can let the people at the high school know, Amanda has us scheduled, so. That'll be good. Any other, any note? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. I always love that, Julie.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, second, Ginny. All those in favor, unanimous, thank you, everybody.